Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning, everyone.
Hey Ted, that agenda is a two-page document. You can't show it all. Can you scroll down a little bit?
Yeah, I was actually just thinking about whether I could shrink the text.
All right, that's okay. We could stick with this and then when you get down, WCC, CDBG, and yeah.
Maybe I can play with a different view.
It may not, yeah, okay. It may not be worth juggling, right?
Yeah, I don't know.
It's okay. Oh, there you go. Keep it like that. Yep. Thank you, Ted.
Cool. Yep.
Good morning, Bill. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Anthony. This is Ted.
Yeah, sorry about that. I had to unmute myself.
Okay, thanks.
Ted, you're recording this, right?
Uh, yeah, let me double check.
Yeah, because I don't see, I don't see Michael Vernon.
Your call has been forwarded to an.
I'm here, Bill.
Thank you, thank you, Michael.
Bill, do you know if Michael Lipkin made it in?
He, he is having trouble at the last minute. He stayed home, but he's having trouble getting in the meeting. So Ted's going to be running the meeting. He might join us in a few minutes.
Okay.
Good morning. It's Holly.
Good morning, Holly. Thank you.
Good morning, Bill. It's Kathy.
Hi Kathy. Good morning. Thank you so much, everybody.
Sure. Survival of the fittest right now.
The big, the big dig.
Big time.
Hello?
Good morning, Bill.
Good, good morning, Richard.
Tony's here.
Oh, Tony Scardino. Thank you so much, Tony.
Yep. Rob should be on shortly, although he's been out plowing since all day yesterday, so.
Yeah. Oh, boy. That's lots of plow up there. Boy, oh, boy.
Yes, there is.
Bill, how many did White Plains, how many inches did White Plains get?
It said in some, a couple of sources, about 20 inches. And then it started raining last night when I was, while I was shoveling, kind of around dinnertime. And luckily, that kind of kept the, the amounts down, just made it a little heavier to plow, to shovel. And even this morning, it was still kind of drizzling. So, I mean, you know, we would have gotten another foot or something like that if it didn't start to rain. I mean, that's what they're getting up, upstate is probably about three feet of snow.
For what it's worth, it hasn't stopped snowing yet.
Boy.
Yeah, I'm in Hartsdale and it's, it's not heavy, but it's snowing.
Oh, it's eighteen inches up here. I mean, there's literally, it's to the point where there's no place to even put the snow along the driveway anymore. That's how bad it is.
Shovel my driveway, but there's no plows the street. Just plows it right back in.
Right. And that's like the heavy stuff. It's like bricks.
Wet, frozen, yeah. Got to go out and chop it after this meeting. How are we doing with members?
Uh, still only about, I see Richard, Robert, Holly, Kathy. Tell me, mascot tier roll call. Anybody else? Holly, I got. Oh, I see Nat Federici from DEF for Vincent.
I see Robert Barron's on there too, Bill. I don't know if he said his name.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Anthony. I got Rob right. So Richard, Robert, Holly, Nat for Vinnie, and Kathy. I see, okay.
I feel so badly for the people at the county center. What a, what a nightmare. You can imagine. It's closed again today. So anybody that has an appointment is hysterical.
Yeah, I have one on the 20th. Hopefully, it'll be.
We should be fine by then, hopefully. But today would start the second round of people that have already got it. So you got that.
Oh.
Yeah.
Well, actually, I'd say the second round can be delayed a day or two.
Yeah, I heard that too. That's not hysterical, but you have a backlog now of people from Monday, now today, and then the second round.
Except that they allowed people in on Sunday who had appointments on Monday.
Right.
So, so not everybody from Monday got delayed, so.
Right. But the people that had appointments for yesterday were out of their minds because the people, the other people were put ahead of them on Sunday. So it was, it's just a logistical nightmare. And the people at the place are so good, you can imagine they're like getting yelled at, so. It'll work out, but this was an absolute nightmare for them too.
Bill, anyone sign on?
No, Richard's still at five.
Do we have anyone from?
I'm, I'm gonna just try to do, I'm gonna just go through who I've got so far as members, just in case there's somebody on the phone.
Okay, somebody's gotta mute. Somebody's gotta mute. There's a lot of.
Yeah, please, everyone get on mute. Thank you very much, Richard. Still, thank you very much. Again, so far, planning board members, Richard Hyman, Robert Barron, Holly Hasbrook, Nat Federici for Vincent Copicki and Kathy O'Connor from Parks. That's five.
You have Gail on for Hugh, Bernie Tomes, I see.
Oh, I didn't see Bernie. I, okay. Bernie. And, and then so that's Gail for Hugh. Okay.
So that makes seven, right?
That's seven. That's, that's a seven. Thank you very much, Nona.
Okay, should we give it another minute? Did you get any people who said they couldn't make it?
No.
Okay, well, let's go ahead. Let's call to order the Tuesday, February 2nd, 2021 Westchester County Planning Board meeting. Our next meeting dates, and hopefully, spring will come, March 2nd, then April 6th, and then May 4th. We have the minutes of the January 5th meeting. There were revised minutes sent out yesterday with a few edits. Does anyone else have any edits they'd like to make to the January 5th, 2021 minutes? If not, can I have a motion to approve them as edited?
This is Rob, so moved.
Thank you, Rob. Can I have a second?
Kathy, second.
Kathy, thank you. Can you call the roll, please, Bill?
Richard Hyman?
Yes.
James Aren't? Well, I didn't see. No. Robert Barron?
Yes.
Dwight Douglas? No. Daniel Finger? No, not yet. Imena Franchella? Not yet. Holly Hasbrook?
Yes.
Bernie Toms, Toms? Nice, I saw you there, Bernie. Bernie Toms?
Aye.
Thank you, Bernie. Gail Caspin for Hugh Grecian? Great. Thank you, Gail. Nat Federici for Vincent Copicki?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Chairman's.
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. And Kathy O'Connor?
Yes.
Thank you, Kathy. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
Okay, Chairman's remarks. Well, I guess there's one good thing about all the weeks we've had with the WebEx meetings, that on a day like this, we can still have a meeting. Given, I don't think too many of us would want to drive to White Plains, given the road conditions. My only other comment is that it's been months now, and we're still waiting for ConEd to respond to the county planning board's questions regarding trimming of trees, both on county property and in local municipalities. And there's an echo here somewhere. And it's hard to figure out what is going on, how they could just simply ignore our comments. That's it. Commissioner Drummond?
Good morning, everyone. Um, so I do have a couple of things to let you know about. Number one, last week, the monitor, the federal, last week, the housing monitor filed his report with the court on Tuesday evening. The report itself is 60 pages, but there are over 1,000 pages of attachments. The bottom line is that the federal monitor finds Westchester County in substantial compliance with the requirements of the housing settlement agreements. The Justice Department did an initial review of this and allowed, agreed with his assumption. The court has now set February 10th as the date for anybody who wishes to comment on the monitor's report. And, you know, that's the date that everybody, anybody and everybody who wants to say something about what we've done will have until to, to make their comments too. In the report, and as of the end of fourth quarter 2020, the county has 723 completed units. We have another 100 units under construction. The one, the next units we expect to finish are the 28 units in Chapakwa, the Conderford Development at 54 Hunts Place. Those 28 will put us at 751 units. So, you know, again, even the numbers are getting there, but the fact that those units, their marketing is done, the financing in place, building permits, and a deed restriction is actually filed on those units. So the only thing they just don't have is a TCO yet. And they wouldn't be able to get their CO because they can't do landscaping at this time of year. So February 10th, we'll have a better sense of, of whether there are any objections or not, but it does appear that the light is getting bigger at the end of that tunnel. Um, we also, on January 12th, the county did submit its application to the Treasury Department to accept the $22.7 million of eviction prevention money that was included in the stimulus bill that the president signed on December 27th. So that gives almost $23 million, plus the city of Yonkers applied for their $6 million. That's almost $29 million to be able to deal with eviction prevention issues in 2021. As of right now, we have to spend 65% of those funds by September 30th, and all of the money by December 31st. We are still trying to get all the information about how, what's eligible, what's not. We know foreclosure prevention is not eligible. But, you know, we've been meeting weekly and even in some cases, having multiple conversations a week, just trying to figure out what's the best way to allocate the funds. I have now issued an RFP to get some nonprofit providers on board to help us with eviction prevention services. Because this is, this is a lot of money to get out the door. So, you know, so stay tuned for how we're going to roll out this eviction prevention program. And then last, I know we, we wanted to give a really, really quick update on Memorial Field, because today is the, you know, we're going to be dealing with a lot of the capital budget and capital project. So I just figured if we could get a real quick update. Gail, I don't know if it's a DPW issue, or Kathy or Peter from Parks, if one of you could just give a real quick update on where we're at with Memorial Field.
I know Peter had spoken, I'm sorry, I think Hugh, somebody from DPW was going to give the update, because it really is a DPW project. Gail, do you have any info?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. I do have some updates. Construction is in progress. The contractor is mobilized, you know, with their trailer. They've started work. Demolition, debris removal at the site, all that initial work has taken place. A lot of the rock excavation has taken place, and the next step would be the pile driving for the foundation. The work is progressing. There have been some, you know, unforeseen conditions, like a little more rock than was expected. But we've been working through those issues with the contractor, and, you know, the progress is definitely being made. So, so, you know, that's a report that the, their, the work is going fairly well.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. We appreciate that.
Okay.
All right, Richard, that's it for my remarks.
Okay, I'm sorry. People are gonna need to mute when other people are talking. Is there an end date for Memorial Field?
Hi, okay. I did ask about that. We're aiming for substantial completion sometime in October of this year. The contractor does understand, you know, the time sensitivity of the project. So we, that's, that's what we're reporting right now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Next referrals, ratification of actions taken by staff from January 1st through January 15th. Does anybody have any comments?
Hi, it's Holly. I do have a comment on the North Castle project. It's, I guess it's called Eagle Ridge. It's a new subdivision from the, at the, I guess it's like a parcel that was part of the IBM property. I agree with the comment about the 52-bedroom townhouses. If those could be, if some of those could be affordable, it looks like they're putting all the affordable units in the condos. And I just don't know, you know, why they all have to be in the condos and not in the townhomes as well.
Thank you, Holly. Any other comments? I, I do have one regarding the Porchester zoning text amendment. This is based upon a series of amendments. Porchester adopted its form-based code, they put in a requirement that no lot could be more than a certain maximum width, and in downtown, it was about 120 feet. And the purpose was to avoid another giant project like the Costco GNS project, which is totally out of character to the smaller, more idiosyncratic buildings in the downtown. Well, several developers came up with proposals that were over 300 feet long. And the village board of trustees eliminated the maximum lot width requirement, which would allow them to occur. So citizens, including myself, recommended that the maximum lot width be replaced by maximum building width, which would also regulate the length of buildings and prevent those big, giant projects. And the, the letter in the referral and the, the letter from the staff indicates that, one, there was no indication of how they came up with the numbers, and for some coincidence, the, the new allowable maximum building width is 325 feet in the downtown, where all the proposals have been 300 feet. And this is gonna destroy downtown Porchester. It's, it's, one of the projects is tearing down five buildings eligible for the National Register, the other is gonna tear down three buildings eligible for the National Register and just replace it with a giant building in its place. So the status of that Porchester downtown is right now at risk. Anyway, that is my comment on, on that. Any other comments on the referrals? If not, can I have a motion to approve the referrals from January 1st through January 15th, 2021?
This is Rob, so moved.
Thank you, Rob. Can I have a second?
I'll second it, James.
Thank you, James. Call the roll, please, Bill.
Richard Hyman?
Yes.
James Aren't?
Yes.
Robert Barron? I didn't see Dwight Douglas?
Yes, because you can't hear me.
Thank you, thank you so much, Dwight. Daniel Finger? Not yet? Okay. Imena Franchella? Not yet. Holly Hasbrook?
Yes.
Bernie Toms?
Yes.
Reenie Toback? I haven't seen Reenie. No.
Uh, Bill, Reenie is, is on calling.
Okay, great. Reenie, are you there?
Yes, I, I, I'm getting a notice. I can't.
Oh. Just looking for a vote on the referral, Reenie?
Reenie, you should be unmuted.
Okay, yes.
Thank you very much, Reenie. Gail Caspin for Hugh Grecian?
Yeah.
Nat Federici for Vincent Copicki?
Yes.
And Kathy O'Connor?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Matters for Board Action, Adoption of Planning Board Report on the 2021, 2022 Westchester Community College Capital Budget. Okay. Who is going to present this?
Great, that's me. And Ted, if you can set me up where I'm gonna then share my screen?
Yep.
While I'm waiting here, um, here we go, share my screen. I was gonna introduce, oops, sorry about that, everybody.
Bill, while you're doing that, would you like me to read the President?
Yes, I was gonna introduce, uh, Rob Cirillo and Anthony Scordino from WCC. And Anthony, thank you very much. Uh, you had some preface, we requested WCC, uh, provide some background on the status of the college and, and COVID. So thank you very much, Anthony. Go ahead.
Thank you. President Miles has, uh, provided me some comments that she'd like me to read to the board. I will begin. The college's capital plan enhances and extends the physical plant and technology infrastructure to uphold the college's mission for accessible, high-quality education as we celebrate the college's 75th anniversary during 2021, 2022, and into the future. This briefing contains selected highlights to update the board on key developments. Additional characteristics. Due to COVID-19, we have shifted 95% of the college's instruction and student activities to remote and online formats to ensure public health and safety. More than 1,500 individuals are approved for onsite facilities, uh, following restricted usage protocols for limited in-person classes and activities required for certification, uh, and authentic assessment of learning, nursing, EMT, respiratory, culinary, and so on. Every person who comes on campus is known and tracked. We have partnered with the New York State Department of Health and Westchester County Department of Health and community partners for approved facility usage to combat COVID-19, such as nursing training for COVID-19 test staging for nursing homes, vaccine distribution beginning, uh, in February this month, and food distribution. Increased automation and investments needed for next-generation technologies, automation, robotics, and artificial intelligence. Advanced equipment and technologies required for health careers and technologies and other evolving employment opportunities in the gig economy. Some student characteristics. Serving more than 10,000 credit students, about evenly split between part-time and full-time students. Part-time enrollment has remained persistent, representing the demanding and complicated lives of our students, including the gig economy employment. While there are no correlations to part-time status, there are roughly 50/50 split between the number of students transfer-oriented programs and technical programs, uh, leading directly to the workforce. The other half is preparing for transfer. Uh, 30% of our students are over the age of 24. Increasing numbers of transfers are, are from students at four-year colleges, so receiving, we are receiving more students from four-year colleges at the present time. And we are sending more students out to four-year colleges. We have been celebrated as the most diverse of the 64 campuses that make up the state, uh, SUNY system, with more than 40% of students, uh, that are Latinx, nearly 20% black. Our three-year graduation rate has soared over 70%, higher than it was six years ago. We're up over 20% now. Uh, from fall 2019 to 2020, the number of students who entered Westchester Community College are college-ready. They decreased, uh, remediation from 50% of the students, uh, to 60%. So we, we've gone down on students who need remediation, which is great, means they can graduate sooner. And the college's capital plan focuses on Valhalla, but there are exciting things in store for extension locations. One of which is planning to offer full-degree programs. Yonkers, Bike Plains, Mount Vernon, Austin, and Peekskill are all integral to the college's mission, uh, notwithstanding the remote environment, since they are strategically located, uh, where we serve our students. And I'd like to thank you for that, uh, moment to read the statement from President Miles.
Tony, thank you so much. Great timing, and you gave us time to pull up our, pull up the presentation, which again, thank you for helping us, uh, with submitting all of the projects and with the presentation. And, uh, so, yeah.
I'm sorry, could I ask one question? Anthony, did you say, um, that the college will be doing vaccinations in February?
We have an MOU with the county and there's a walkthrough with county IT today to make sure our gymnasium is prepped and ready to start to become a vaccination site. Uh, that could happen relatively quickly. We did assist with DOH when they were there doing nursing training. So, uh, we are confident we all have the facility available and ready for them.
Terrific. Thank you very much.
Richard, can I jump in a second? Um, on, on that particular point, um, the county is going to several locations, um, to prepare for being a potential point of distribution. So, um, at this point in time, there's nothing that is locked in, um, but we have to go through the process of identifying locations. So, um, don't want anyone paying, listening today or the, on, on the WebEx or, um, looking at minutes or, um, in the future to think that that site is going to be there. It is one of the potential locations.
Uh, can I ask a question, Ken?
Yes, sir.
Um, when you're saying the college is a location, is that in all of the facilities for the college or only specific, uh, locations for the college?
It's specific locations around the, um, around the county. Um, with the state has been given a list of sites that we've been, um, trying to identify, um, around the county in the four corners of the county, um, to be able to expand, uh, locations. Um, and the community college has been extremely helpful in trying to make that happen.
Thank you.
Great. Again, again, Anthony, thank you very much. Again, also on the call is Robert Cirillo, who, uh, has been, uh, he's basically the superintendent and director of operations at the college. And he and his staff have been up all night plowing. Uh, so thank, thank you again, Rob, and for providing all the material here. And I'm gonna just give a little introduction again. WCC has submitted six projects for 2021 slash 22, uh, total of, uh, $3,316,900 with a county share of $1.7 million of projects. So it's a little bit over 50% is the county share. Again, capital projects, for the most part, are 50% funded by New York State. I'm gonna go into the slides. Ted, next slide. The first project is WCC 79 Roof Replacement. This project replaces roofs throughout the campus that are in need of replacement due to age and warranty. This year in 2021, 22, uh, the roof that's going to be replaced is at the Knollwood Center at the southern part of the campus. Uh, there's continuing, continuing education facilities at that building. Uh, it's over 30 years old and the, uh, gross product, gross amount is 196,000, uh, with a county share of 98,000. Next slide, Ted. Next project is WCC 82 Site Upgrade Campus Wide. Again, it's a project that every year, there's different areas of the campus that are improved. Uh, in 2021, 22, the area around the Technology Building, roadways and pathways and sidewalks will be improved, as well as the Student Center Parking Lot, known as Parking Lot B. And here you have some slides of the, uh, you know, older sections that will be improved, uh, crosswalks and sidewalks improved and driveways and, and roadways around those buildings. And in that parking lot will be improved next year, uh, for a total of 392,000 with a county share of 196,000. Next slide, Ted. Next project, WCC 83 Infrastructure, Infrastructure Upgrade Various Buildings. Again, another project that goes around the campus and improving different buildings. Um, and, uh, the 2021 phase of the project will include the restoration of Hartford Hall, the Student Center, and the adjacent bookstore next door to the book, Student Center. The improvements, uh, typical of this project are window replacements to, uh, meet current energy codes, replacement of interior floors and finishes, upgrades to meet ADA requirements, lighting fixtures and systems to be more energy efficient, upgrades to mechanical, electrical, and plumbing components and systems. And then, uh, for Hartford Hall, which is, uh, as many of you know, is on the National Register of Historic Places. There are going to be, uh, interior, including replacement of the boiler, uh, in, inside the Hartford Hall. And, uh, we'll coordinate with WCC staff and if needed, send materials to, uh, New York State Historic Office, uh, for their review. Next, uh, next slide, Ted. The, uh, next project is WCC 90. It's the first of the two technology projects. This is the first, the first, this is technology upgrade for off-campus, so the, all the sites that are not at Valhalla. Um, and, uh, basically, uh, there's a variety of projects. I'll go through them quickly. For 2122, we've got digital signage replacement, media equipment, PC, laptop, phone replacement, printer replacement, scanner, and wire, scanner replacement, wireless, wireless equipment replacement and enhancement. And, uh, the, the college's PCs are on a five-year replacement cycle. And, uh, and as noted on our planning board report also, uh, we will review any components of these projects that have, um, physical, uh, planning implications. Next slide. WCC 91, these are the technology upgrades on campus, Valhalla campus. For 2122, uh, improvements will include smart classroom tech, laptop and PC replacements, NAC security replacement, phone replacement, printer replacement, scanner, server, switch replacements, UPS replacement, and wireless replacement. And again, all these projects assure that the college can keep up with the rapid and ongoing changes which occur with information and educational technologies. Next slide, Ted. WCC 92 Planning Studies. As you see here, this is one project that does not have state funding because there, uh, it's basically planning for future capital projects. Um, in the past, uh, this has provided funds for feasibility and environmental studies. Uh, it's provided, uh, done the college utilization studies, IT feasibility studies, a security master plan. And most recently, uh, the college is completing an update to its master plan, which was last updated in 2012. So, uh, the staff here at the, at the planning department attended meetings and participated in committees. Uh, and again, a substantial part of that was, uh, looking at their space utilization and, uh, and looking at future capital projects at the Valhalla campus. And again, $75,000 for that project. And, uh, I think that's the last of the projects. Um, and, uh, so does anyone have any questions for us or the college staff?
Yes, I, I have one question. Uh, is there any work being done on the use of, uh, or deployment of solar technology? Solar technology, uh, for, um, energy requirements at the college?
Rob or Aunt, Robert, Tony?
Sure, I can answer that. Good morning, everyone. Our updated master plan does include four rooms on campus to install solar panels on the roof. Right now, we're in, um, design phase for Area 2, that was mentioned, the site improvement. And Area 2 was parking lot 3 on the main campus. And parking lot 3 will have charging stations installed once we complete that project. So we are working, um, close with the state and also county on, uh, having green on campus.
Great, thank you very much, Rob. Any other questions? Great, um, we've included a, uh, resolution for the board to consider, uh, to adopt the, the, uh, draft planning board report.
Can we have, if there are no other questions, can we have a motion to approve the adoption of the planning board report on the Westchester Community College Capital Budget?
I'll move.
I'm sorry, that was.
Dwight.
Thanks Dwight. We have a second.
A second.
And that was, thank you, Bernie. Call the role, please, Bill.
Richard Hyman?
Yes.
James Art?
Yes.
Robert Barron? Robert Barron, you there?
Looks like Robert Barron has his hand up. I don't know if he's.
Okay, thank you very, thank you very much, everybody. Thank you. Uh, Dwight Douglas?
Yes.
Uh, Daniel Finger? I hadn't seen Daniel. Jimena Franchella? I hadn't seen him or her either.
Bill, Robert Barron is doing a timeout, just to let you know on the video.
Okay. Holly Hasbrook?
Yes.
Thank you. Bernie Tom?
Wait, 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 wait. Could someone unmute? Robert, can you unmute?
Ted, can you try that?
Can't unmute. Ted, can you?
Yeah, I, I, I can't unmute him for some reason. Uh, let me see. Yeah, I think he's, he's muted himself, so I.
You hit the spacebar, Robert.
And maybe try to call in if you get to the call, if you get to the call in information.
Robert, try again.
I don't know if Robert wants to attempt to, uh, log out and log back in. That, that might fix it.
So we did get visible thumbs up from him though, right?
He, he was giving a timeout, but he was doing T. I don't know what that means.
Okay.
No, I'm not sure. I'm sorry.
Okay, let's, let's, let's proceed. Sorry, Robert.
No, thank you, everybody. Uh, Reenie Toback?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Gail Katsman for UGriechen?
Yeah.
Uh, Nat Federici for Vincent Kopicki?
Yes.
And Kathy O'Connor?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Uh, next item on the agenda, Amendment of the Fiscal Year 2019 through 2023 Consolidated Plan. The FY 2021 Action Plan for the Community Development Program. Okay, who is going to be handling that?
Um, that would be me, Anthony Zano. So Ted, if you can bring that up, or I can share my screen, but you can just bring up that PowerPoint, please. Good morning, everybody. While Ted's doing that, let me just, uh, just talk briefly. So this is our third year of the, a three-year cycle. So many of the projects that you've seen on the spreadsheet are the same. There hasn't been, hasn't been many changes. So let's go through this real quickly. Well, let's just go through this. So we had a, we opened our comment period on January 12th for a 30-day comment period. Ted, go to the next slide. Where we've, um, we met with our Community Development Advisory Group, which is Citizens, and then we met with our Urban County Council. This is our, our 2021 Action Plan is our one-year plan that you've seen in previous in 2019 and 2020. It's, our consortium now is 30 communities strong. We recently added the city of Peekskill, the town of Newcastle, and the village of Tuckahoe. We are now a little over 400,000 people in our population. But once again, we had our, we opened our comment period on January 12th and we'll close that on February 11th. Next, please. Maybe it would have been easier. Okay, let me go. Sorry, folks. So, um, we don't have any planning estimates from HUD yet, but we do have an approved, uh, budget from the federal government. We're estimating we'll receive about a million dollars in our home investment partnership program, about 325,000 for emergency solutions grant or ESG. And our largest project, uh, our largest fund is about $4 million for our community development block grant, known as CDVG, which goes to nonprofits and municipality. Next, please. Next slide, Ted, I'm sorry. Okay, so the, our affordable, our home program is for affordable housing construction. It's available to developers and it's on a first-ready, first-serve basis. So as developments get all their approvals in place and we identify a funding gap, we fund those projects. We issue those as loans sometimes. Therefore, the income is at 50 and 60% of median income and 80%. We've distributed almost $35 million in home funds since we began using these funds. The county is able to use, utilize a percentage of that, 10% for admin costs. The city of Yonkers and Mount Vernon get their own home funds to fund projects in their communities. Next, Ted. I think the next one is going to be ESG. Ted, let's go to the next page, please.
Sorry, I, uh, it's just taking. Sorry, I uh it's just taking a minute to respond.
It's okay, I appreciate it. So our E S G is for our homeless prevention program. It assists the very low income people out of below uh thirty percent. We also able to rec uh collect some administrative costs to cover our staffing. We issued an R F P and we'll be distributing funds to the bridge fund and the Catholic Charries Community Services to assist with that that program. Next Ted.
Tony, wait, on this one, the these funds go directly to not for profits, not directly to individuals?
Correct, to nonprofits to assist in uh in a homeless prevention program.
Hopefully it'll be coordinated with the eviction prevention money that we're getting?
Yes, that that's why it becomes what Norma says, issue another R F P. We're we're trying to not have any duplication of services and and what we do the forms for that to check that we're not reimbursing something that someone else was getting other funds for. That's so there's a lot of money, but there's a lot of need. But yes, we issued this R F P in November and we'll be focusing on this group. But the the funds that um Norma has a different R F P for a larger group.
And and just as a side note, Richard, the eviction prevention, the twenty three million does have a higher A M I. It actually um it's it's focused for folks who are below admirable fifty percent of A M I, but it does actually allow us to go up to eighty percent A M I for eviction prevention, but it's based on their income in March of twenty twenty. So um it so we'll use these programs um in coordination with each other.
The eviction prevention money, does that go directly to individuals or also only to not for profits?
It's supposed to go directly, uh well, it's supposed to pay landlords. It's not supposed to pay individuals, okay?
But it goes directly to landlords, not through a not for profit. You're going to be administering.
It could be. I I'm R F Ping to get some nonprofits on board because we're going to have to get, you know, we don't have the staff to be able to administer this these programs directly.
Okay, thank you.
And Norma, the the other, the R F P you issued before is not just consortium communities, correct? Or is it just consortium?
No, the eviction prevention funds from the from the stimulus bill are countywide.
Okay, that's what I'm, so so Richard, the our E S G focuses on our thirty eligible consortium communities while Norma's R F P is going to go beyond those those communities.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, the C D B G, sorry, the C D B G program is our largest grant, approximately four million dollars. It goes to nonprofits and municipalities to do all sorts of projects that you saw in our spreadsheet. It has to benefit a low to moderate income area, whether that's based on census data or it could be low income, a limited clientele, which is for when you can actually touch the person that will be benefiting it, which most you're rehabilitating an affordable housing unit. So it's based on that um those low mod housing or it's benefiting a limited clientele. It's a a daycare center that's assisting a low to moderate income family. Our app, we we did accept from the three new uh communities that joined the consortium, we accepted applications in July thirty first for them to submit for the twenty twenty one round. Um with C D B G, we're able to uh allocate twenty percent of it towards our administrative costs. We don't do that much. And no more than fifteen percent can go towards our public services. So the seventy, at least seventy percent of our uh funds have to be spent to benefit low to moderate income um individuals. We we do fund in our public service, an expansion of a service or a new service. We don't just keep paying over and over. And also, we set aside funds for our property improvement program to do rehabilitation for affordable housing. And that that's where we use as a if if we get less funding than we're anticipating from HUD, this is our area where we adjust. Next slide, please. I think I should have promised myself. Ted, next slide Ted, sorry. Sorry, folks.
Just a bit of a delay, sorry.
Yeah, okay. Okay, okay. So this map is though it's hard to see. You're seeing all the gray communities are not those that belong to the consortium. However, I do need to point out that there are other entitlements. The city of Yonkers, White Plains, New Rochelle, and Mount Vernon also get their own C D B G funding. So you so the areas that the we're at thirty communities strong, but there still are uh additional communities that could join the consortium. That will and and the county, Norma might mention this, but they will be reaching out to those communities because they have until the middle of June to to join the consortium and sign the cooperation agreements. Have the opportunity to submit applications in the next funding round. Next, please. What this chart is showing us is the ten uh communities that have the highest population of low to moderate income families. Um Portchester being our top, uh then Peekskill, Sleepy Hollow, and you go down Austin Village, Mount Kisco, and so forth. And it goes down. So our threshold to do projects in low to moderate income neighborhoods is fifty one percent. So you get all the way down to the fifth community where you blend the entire community. It is it is above the minimum of fifty one percent. So that allows us to do improvements in those top ten. And we, as part of the program, we always like to, you know, provide funds to the neediest communities. So and you'll see in our spreadsheet that we are spending or we are allocating significant portion of our funds to do projects in these top ten communities. Next, please. Uh just a summary of really what the changes are from the what you saw last in twenty twenty. The only projects that we've now funded that you haven't were on the sheet before was the city of Peekskill submitted uh phase one and a phase two for a hollow brook dam which provides drinking water to the city. Um and so they submitted two applications and we granted them two applications. We also the village of Tuckahoe submitted two applications. We said we are funding one of their playground upgrades um in the village. And then we had a reallocation or an adjustment funds where in in twenty twenty, the village of Portchester had Columbus Park. They have, they are seeking outside funding, additional sorts of funds for um for their their share and 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 more costs of the for grants to cover their share and to pay for the rest of the park. But there that wouldn't be available to twenty twenty one. So we reprogrammed their money to twenty twenty one. But we also funded a um pedestrian vehicular traffic uh improvements, traffic light improvements on Regent Street that is related to an affordable housing project for seniors that we just completed in in the village. So we were able to utilize those money, those funds to address a gap that we had in funding and and complete uh some safety improvements that were needed at a at an intersection. Next, please. Uh this is just summarizing in the in the twenty twenty one funding for C D B G projects. We're funding nine sidewalk projects, both million two and change, seven playgrounds. Oops. Sorry, you went too fast.
I'm sorry, I.
That's okay. It's okay. I, oh, back up one more. Okay, so that's just the summary. We also did um can you go back? There we go. Two public facilities, a senior center and and municipal facility, three water and sewer project improvements and two public services. You can go to the next one now, Ted. It's our next step. So as I mentioned, we had our, we opened our comment period in January twelfth. We'll close it on the eleventh. We'll be submitting to the Board of Legislators legislation for the uh to submit the action plan on February twenty second. Looking for the Board of Legislators to take action at their March eighth meeting. We'll be submitting this action plan to HUD by March fifteenth, so we can start our fiscal year in on May first. Next, please. Just in terms of next steps. We are commencing our next reround funding cycle, requesting applications for the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty four cycle. We'll be having an information session where we will invite the all the consortium communities and nonprofits that do work in those communities as well as nonprofits that do work throughout um throughout Westchester, but they have to benefit the consortium members. The applications will be due on June twenty fifth. We'll be doing spending July and September, July through September reviewing the applications. And then we will be uh making presentations to our group for recommendations. And then we'll start all over again. Next January, we'll release the recommendations for twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, and twenty twenty four. And we'll be back before you in the in February of that year, doing what I am doing today. So I think that is, is there one more slide? I think that's it. Anyone has any questions? Oh, Norma, did I miss anything?
No, you're fine.
Anyone have any questions? The uh amendment to the uh consolidated plan, the fiscal twenty twenty one action plan. So we have a resolution um that needs adoption. Uh can I have a motion to adopt this act capital, this action plan?
This is Holly, I'll move.
Thank you, Holly. Can we have a second?
This is Dwight, I'll second.
Thank you Dwight. Bill, call the roll, please.
Richard Hyman?
Yes.
James Art?
Yes.
I have Robert Barron on my cell phone speaker. So Robert?
Yes.
Dwight Douglas?
Yes.
Uh I didn't see Daniel or Himena, so I'm just going to skip to Holly Hasbrook?
Yes.
Bernie Tomes?
Yes.
Reenie Toback? Is there a Reenie?
Yes.
Thank you so much, Reenie. Gail for Hugh Gretchen?
Yes.
Uh Nat Federici for Vincent Kopicki?
Yes.
And Kathy O'Connor?
Yes.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Uh next on our agenda is the draft supplemental planning board report of the twenty twenty one capital project requests.
Great. Again, I'm going to have Ted pull up that PowerPoint presentation. Again, uh Robert Barron is uh he sees everything, but he's going to be on my cell, so you'll hear him here. Um so the planning board, while Ted's getting that up, if you remember last summer, you developed, we presented and you approved a report on the county capital projects for twenty twenty one and in in the summer. And then in the fall, we came back for a handful of projects that the county executive had added to the twenty twenty one projects. Um and then now uh that those projects were then submitted to the Board of Legislators in the fall. In December, the Board of Legislators adopted the twenty twenty one capital program and they have added several projects. They've added a total of fourteen projects uh within twelve capital projects. I'll go through those. They've added a total of uh over thirty two million dollars in projects. Uh and the total capital program as it's as it was approved is over two hundred and thirty one million. So again, added thirty two million. And the total program is two hundred and thirty one million. Um and Ted, next slide. So again, uh fourteen projects, this is the first one. So I broke it up by uh departments. The first project is an information technology project, B I T fifty one. The Board of Legislators added an additional five million dollars to this existing project, criminal discovery law information systems project. Uh it is for the purchase, uh the additional funds are to purchase hardware and software and other equipment as well as warranties to assist local municipalities throughout Westchester County related to the police body camera and or data storage devices for camera footage. So again, the board added five million dollars to that. Next several projects are planning department projects. Um and this next project, B L A one A, is is an existing capital project parkland and historical preservation program. The Board of Legislators added three separate uh projects within this one capital project. And I'm going to talk through them. Uh the first one is a a new park. We're calling it Ludlow Park in the city of Yonkers. It's for ten million dollars. It's directly adjacent to the Yonkers uh wastewater treatment facility. It's right at the north end. There's an empty lot on county property. Um and uh it's operated by the Department of Environmental Facilities. And it's for uh the design construction of a new water access public park on the riverfront. So it does front on the Hudson River. Again, it's squeezed at the top of the uh D E F wastewater treatment facility in the Ludlow Park neighborhood um for ten million dollars. And for these projects, I've got some aerial photos of the parks too. The next, we could show that uh uh when we're finished and if we have any questions on these. The next project is for the Fourth Street Playground in Mount Vernon. Two million dollars have been added for this project. It's to include the demolition of the existing site features at this park in Mount Vernon and the construction of two new basketball courts, two practice basketball courts. New perimeter wall and fencing, new light fixtures, bleacher seating for up to four hundred spectators. Additional amenities and site work, including restrooms, storage space, and utility infrastructure. Again, two million dollars for that project. The next project is is five million dollars for additional segments of Riverwalk in Yonkers. And again, it's uh not much information on this, but the uh Board of Legislators did identify uh the need for additional segments of Riverwalk in Yonkers, full length of the city of Yonkers. Again, design, construction, and construction management. Uh we'll need to meet with not only the legislators to identify which projects that five million dollars can go towards, but also, of course, the city of Yonkers and revisit our Riverwalk master plan uh which had the route identified as it goes through the city of Yonkers along the Hudson River. Uh but also revisit some of the potential properties uh that could be improved with this five million dollars. It wouldn't be able to, the five million dollars won't be able to uh provide for the full length of Riverwalk in Yonkers and all the different parcels that are potential, but uh we need to identify that. So that's still still to be determined on where that's going to go. So next slide Ted.
Wait Bill, wait.
Yes.
Um I'm sure these three projects are wonderful projects. But they don't seem to have been developed in any detail at all in terms of like what what's going to go into Ludlow Park and uh what what conditions are at the current Fourth Street Playground and which sections of the Riverwalk are in Yonkers. I mean, they're just concepts. There's and to get into a capital project this, it would seem that there should be much more detail on this. And I know that one of our uh our roles as the planning board is to review these. And my feeling is that uh that we would hold on on these because there's not enough detail left presented to us for us to know what the fact we are approving.
Right. And 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 Richard, thank you. The uh the uh the rating system that we use for our capital projects, um if you recall on the reports that you say T L two, and that's basically approved in concept, subject to review when more uh you know, plans get developed and the staff review those plans and coordinate with the departments. Um one of the other options is a P L three, which is hold, which it says, hold approval at this time would be premature. And these are for projects that are uh presented with inadequate documentation of need, scope, and programming, location, impact, cost benefit analysis. So if if that seems appropriate for these three under this B L A one A, uh again, you can you can give it a P L three, which is a hold. And then we can revisit it and after more discussions and we can uh come back to the board if you'd like to revise your planning board report.
I would like to hear from some other board members on how to handle this.
Well, Richard, this is this is Bernie Tom. Um not only the the uh park and historical preservation, but uh how 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 does the planning board are taking into consideration anything that deals with the criminal discovery of law enforcement information system? How how do we make a judgment as to what planning goes into this and and uh what's detailed out? Uh is is there enough uh resource on hand to be able to even uh evaluate what's being done there?
That's a good question.
Okay, no, sorry, that gets the role of the county planning board. Remember, the role of the county planning board here is to look at the capital project plan itself and all you you make a recommendation of funding to the Board of Legislators. It is up to the Board of Legislators to clearly vet these projects out to to with each of the departments about the need, about the use of the funds, et cetera. You're looking at it as an at it as an overall scope of um, you know, the departments have identified a need. So you know, in in some of the, most of the projects, the need is clearly identified where then, you know, the department has vetted it out with the capital project staff in in. So, you know, in, in some of the, most of the projects, the need is clearly identified where then, you know, the department has vetted it out with the capital project staff in, in-house. I agree, some of the playgrounds, some of the BOL ads late last year, we don't have all the information yet. So those may not be as clearly identified for your, for the board to potentially take the PL 2 code or something where, because there's a reason the board put it in there. We just don't necessarily have that information yet.
Well, can I, this is, this is Rob. Can they hear me, Bill?
You can hear Robert, right?
Yes.
Great.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Appreciate it. You know, on the parks part, you know, the Ludlow Park and the Riverwalk, in our July report, we put into some great detail about the wastewater treatment plant and the fact that because the, the bulkhead was being reconstructed, that we, we thought it would be a good idea to put a path along on the riverside of the sewage treatment plant. Like that kind of detail, I think would be really helpful because it sort of follows on our request that we made and that we put in the report. So, and then my, but my question is like, if we do a PL 3, like you're mentioning, Richard, like how much delay are we talking about? Are we talking about one meeting? Are we talking about like six months?
Well, I hate to tell you, Rob, but this money is already in the capital budget. The Board of Legislators already put it in. They're basically asking us to rubber stamp what they've done and I'm uncomfortable rubber stamping something that is unclear. So I don't think we would be holding anything up. We would just make, make the point that maybe next time before they add things in, and ask us, and ask us to make a recommendation on it that we be given sufficient information so that we can make an intelligent recommendation.
Okay, Ken, I'm going to step in here again. The role of the board is to make recommendations about the budget as a whole. The Board of Legislators still has to review every single one of these projects. Bill, I think you need to go on mute. There's a lot of feedback.
I'm sorry about that. Yeah, I've got Robert on.
The, the Board of Legislators will still look at every single one of these projects as it's ready to move forward. And again, that's when they vet it with the departments and that's because the board has to actually approve the bond act itself that actually authorizes the use of money. Just putting money in, in the capital budget doesn't actually move any of these projects a whole lot forward. They still need the board's actual action, a super majority of the board to issue bonds.
Well, it's the, it's the first step.
We, so following on what you're saying, Norma, like, do that mean we could just, can we put in or reiterate our, some of the points that we made in the, in the July reports? Like this riverside walkway around the wastewater treatment plants, you know, that like what Rini had talked about, which is trying to provide some separation between bikes and pedestrians, things like that?
Yes, that's, that's, that's your role. That's perfectly appropriate for you guys to include in here because then you're giving guidance to the board as they do their review.
So, so, so on, on that note, if, if, when you're approving this today in a resolution and the resolution basically says items also discussed and recommended by the planning board, can we agree on when you do adopt that? If you're agreeing on Robert's notes, we'll add notes reflecting your previous notes on Riverwalk going around the sewage plant? And I forget, Robert, what was the, what was the other one?
I think it was really, it was Rini's point that she made.
Yes, yes.
To try to provide some separation.
You got it. So we'll add that to the planning for this project. It's regarding going on the outside of the sewage plant and also separation and making sure there's adequate width on Riverwalk segments.
And Rini, sorry, I'm speaking for you.
And, and I do want to point out, the Board of Legislators does read what you guys write, okay? They have actually quoted the county planning board in their capital budget review. So you're not rubber stamping anything here. You are taking a serious look at what was added. And the Board of Legislators will consider it in, as they undertake the more definitive review of everything. So don't think there's, this is absolutely not a rubber stamp.
Thanks, Rob. I was having a lot of trouble trying to get myself unmuted. So, but I do think we need a lot more information on the plan and as someone who has a kind of an inside view on this, yes, this has not been well planned or well thought out, but it's just an attempt to get started on this.
Yeah, just a note. Sorry, we had a little technical difficulty. If anyone's having trouble unmuting themselves, you know, if you can put that in the chat and we'll work on that.
Okay, Bill, why don't you proceed?
Great. Thank you very much. Ted, next slide. Got several more, three more planning projects. BPL 1A, that's our Housing Implementation Fund, HIF, which provides for infrastructure associated with affordable housing. The Board of Legislators has added $2 million to the already appropriated $10 million that was in the county executive budget for, now it's a total of $12 million for 2021. So again, the board has added $2 million, but specifically for a broadband wireless infrastructure improvement to the various affordable housing departments. And we, this would be likely including things like conduits going into the buildings, bringing, bringing the broadband to the buildings. Again, we, this is a, a fund for infrastructure associated with the housing, the affordable housing.
This is only for new projects or you can go to existing projects to do?
I'm assuming it's for new projects.
Okay.
Agreed, new projects.
Thank you, Norma. Yeah. So next project, BPL 26, flood mitigation. Again, this is an existing planning project. And funding, the Board of Legislators has added $200,000 in 2021, specifically for getting access to the Spray Brook in Yonkers for channel clearing. And this project may include the construction of a new gate in the sound barrier along the Spray Parkway to get the, to get into the channelized section of the Spray Brook. And just briefly, this is just north of the split. If you're going north on the Bronx River Parkway, the Spray Parkway splits to the left. There's a sound barrier there on New York State DOT property. And this project, $200,000, will need to be coordinated with New York State DOT to get a gate, to get equipment into that channelized section of the Spray Brook to clear the channel and because the, the debris in the channel has caused flooding in that area. The next project is BPL 40, stormwater management at county facilities. This project is for an additional study as a follow-up study to the 2019 Bronx River watershed report. It was a hydrology study done for the Bronx River. Seven, I'm sorry, $250,000 was added to the, to this project for this follow-up study. More specifically, look at what actions and projects, capital projects can take place along the Bronx River to reduce flooding along the Bronx River. The next project is a public safety project, BPS 32. This is a new project. $125,000 has been added by the board to fund a pilot program to purchase and install a noise camera to study the number of cars and other motor vehicles that emit noise that exceeds a decibel level of 75. The future camera locations will be determined. Again, this is for the purchase and installation of that equipment that, what they call a noise camera. So if a vehicle comes by over 75 decibels, it records, this isn't necessarily for ticketing at this point, but it's just a pilot program to determine the number and, and volume of vehicles traveling on county roadways. Next slide. The next project, RBM 03, Blue Mountain Reservation Site Work is an existing capital project. $5 million was added by the Board of Legislators. The additional funds are for site improvements at the, at the reservation, including a improvements to the concession stand, trail lodge, hiking trails, water fountains, signage and picnic tables. Also included would be the establishment of a new designated area for an expert mountain biking course, dog park, nature trail, kayak dock and green infrastructure and amenities, including remote power units and electrical charging stations. So again, $5 million has been added. This project will be coordinated with PRC staff to determine just how much that $5 million would get towards all those different improvements. And again, that's up at Blue Mountain in Peekskill. The next parks project, RGP 13, general infrastructure equipment acquisition. That's an existing project. But $1 million has been added to that project, which traditionally is for equipment acquisition. And this is for senior fitness equipment at county parks. And so they've added that. And again, this will be coordinated with county PRC staff on determining, determining the locations and, and also the acquisition of the equipment.
And Bill, none of that is for vehicles. It's just senior.
That's right. So the, the greater, the bigger project is for vehicle acquisitions, which you've reviewed before, made comments upon. This year for 2021, the million dollars is just for that senior fitness equipment at various county parks. Thank you, Robert. The, the next parks project, RGP 14, water filling station. So this is a new project. And the Board of Legislators has approved $750,000 in 2021 to provide drinking water bottle filling stations. You may have seen these around in public places at various county park facilities and county buildings. Again, this will be coordinated with county PRC staff and DPWT staff to look at appropriate locations as well as the identification and purchase of the equipment for these water bottle, water bottle filling stations. Next project is RNA C3 VE Macy Park Site Work. So this is an additional $250,000 added to this existing project for site work at VE Macy Park in Ardsley. The $250,000 is for a study to look at, a study and design of sidewalk and pedestrian access improvements to VE Macy Park in Ardsley. The legislators identified, and if you recall, we, the Village of Ardsley is, has, is updating its comprehensive plan. And so it's been identified that this study will coordinate with the Village of Ardsley and the County Parks Department and likely New York State DOT because Route 9A is a state road. So again, this is for $250,000 for a study to look at access in and out of that park. It's been identified as difficult and dangerous in that area and everyone agrees. And this will be a study. Take a look at that. Yes, Robert.
The only thing I would like to add to that is that, one, we, in our report, we explicitly use the word, you know, bicycle, there's be, or people on bicycles. That, that park is basically the, you know, the alternate route for state Route 9A, which is incredibly dangerous, has no shoulder for either pedestrians or somebody or bicycles, bicycles. And I just want to make sure that we sort of articulate the importance of, of that site work to include bicycles and also to reach all the destinations on nine, along 9A opposite the park. So as far north as the Adria Senior Facility Living Center.
All right, I'm going to include that in the report as, as an additional comment in the planning board analysis. Again, the importance of adding, looking at bicycle access along Route 9A and into the park and also looking at access to and from the other uses along Route 9A.
Thank you.
All right. So next project is RTB 09, Tibbetts Brook Park Site Work. This is an existing project for site work at Tibbetts Brook Park in Yonkers. The $1 million added to this project is for the design and construction of a cricket pitch at Tibbetts Brook Park. So this will be coordinated with county PRC staff to identify the location. And again, this project's for the design and construction of the cricket pitch at Tibbetts Brook Park. And the final project, DPWT Department is RB 202. It's a road project. Farragut Avenue, County Road 151. Again, it's an existing project to improve the section Farragut Avenue, but this is for traffic safety enhancements and basically for the design and construction of traffic and pedestrian safety enhancements on Farragut Avenue. I know, Robert, did you have a question on this one?
I actually have questions on this last two. So on the Tibbetts one, first of all, like I applaud the inclusion of, of a cricket pitch on the Board of the Angkor Lantho Alliance and the, the cricket pitch that is literally 12 minutes by bicycle down the South County Trail, you know, away from this, this Tibbetts is completely oversubscribed and heavily used. So it'd be great to have that there. The, the thing that, that I'd like to point out in this is that within, when doing the Tibbetts Brook site work, there is a, it's important to consider the, the route of the old Croton Aqueduct trailway as of right now, the old Croton Aqueduct goes on the northern side of Tibbetts. And it's incredibly dangerous because it takes people across Yonkers Avenue, Midland Avenue and the on-ramp for Cross County Parkway, which has high speed slip lanes. If there's a, there is a connection between the OCA and the South County Trail, which is much safer within Tibbetts Brook, that could be sort of delineated more clearly with wayfinding signage and the creation of a path, you know, crosswalks across the interior roads. That would be very helpful. And then on the Farragut Avenue project, I applaud the county working with the Village of Hastings on, on this project. It's really great to see. Because this is such an important, you know, street because it goes right to the schools, you know, right past all the schools in, in Hastings. Can we just include the word bicycle in the sort of language that we're of this, not just pedestrian safety issues, but it's also bicycle safety issues. A lot of kids ride their bikes to the schools there.
Great. If I will, if it's okay for the board, upon your adoption, I'll include Robert's comments on those two projects, Tibbetts Brook. And also Tibbetts Brook specifically on, on not only supporting the project, the cricket pitch, but also the suggesting improvements about regarding signage and wayfinding for access from the Old Croton Aqueduct through Tibbetts Brook Park. And then also the bicycle access and safety regarding Farragut Avenue. So that's, those are the projects. Are there any other questions regarding these additional projects from the Board of Legislators that have included in the budget?
Okay.
You've got a resolution? Yes.
My question is, what the planning board analysis at the bottom of each of the capital projects is either a PL 1 or a PL 2? So my question is, do the board members feel that we have sufficient information to support these projects? Or are there any projects that we feel there are insufficient information and we would like to hold until we get additional information?
Mr. Chairman, this is Ken again. Can I jump in really quick?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, and I think Norma was summarizing it best. The way that the, the process works from a budget, budgetary process, the Board of Legislators has the ability to, to add additional things into the capital and the operating budget during the budget submission, budget submission and validation and execution and adoption process. What is being asked for you in this meeting is just adding the projects that the Board of Legislators has already approved, as you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, into the plan. This is not, this, this approval that, that you're doing and the suggestion, I guess, coming from Bill about the P3 level of adoption. You don't have enough information to really make any informed decision other than a high level concept. So as Holly was mentioning, it's just something that's kicking off this process. It will be, all of these projects, should they get executed, will come back in front of you with all the detail that's necessary to be able to, to do the things that you're referring to and the due diligence that the planning board does so well and be able to add an additional comment. The comments that you're saying now are definitely going to get back to the Board of Legislators. I saw legislature tomorrow on as well, that they will make sure to have that information. And the planning department is super diligent about bringing that information back to them to let them know that. to let them know that this was a concern from the Planning Department as they're shaping these plans. And the Board of Legislators, quite honestly, just doesn't have the staff to be able to do all these things. So they come up with an idea, they add it into the budget, and then it goes through the proper path through the departments, the various departments, to add in all of the beef and details that's necessary for the full approval. So just, just putting that out there, Mr. Chairman. And I do understand the trepidation to, to feel like it's a rubber stamp, but actually it is just the inclusion in the capital plan itself and then be able to bring those details back to you at a further, for the opportunity when the bond acts actually come up, if they actually do come up.
If I may, you know, endorse, as Damon Mark, County Legislature, I know, you know, those of us who are doing our job there do read all your comments and particularly value them. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank both of you. Well, we have a resolution before us on these capital projects that are being, that were added to the total by the Board of Legislators. And so, so I have a motion. If, if we feel that we have sufficient information and/or we have provided sufficient comments regarding areas where we think additional information is necessary, then I accept the motion to approve. There were revisions to this resolution that was in the package sent yesterday.
I make the motion. It's Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy. Can I have a second?
I'll second it totally.
Thank you, Holly. Call the roll, please, Bill.
Richard Hyman?
Yes.
James Art?
Yes.
Robert Barron? Dwight Douglas?
Yes.
Daniel Finger? Or, or Hinna? I haven't seen them. Holly Hasbrook?
Yes.
Bernie Toms?
Yes.
Rini Toback? Is there, Rini? I know you probably have to unmute yourself or Ted. Thank you so much, Rini. Gail Katzman for UGriechen?
Yes.
Nat Federici for Vincent Kopicy? I don't know if that's, or Vinnie. I'm going to go out to Kathy O'Connor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other matters for board information? Hearing none.
Hold on, hold on. Robert, Robert had one item. Hold on. I have him on hold.
Sorry, I just, when I got cut off, I wanted to ask for Westchester Community College. I don't want to have another vote, but we're doing a, we included in our report on the, 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 you know, complex, the county complex of transportation demand management plan. And it would be nice to see that something similar from Westchester Community College in the future, especially since colleges are some leading, leading, you know, users of transportation demand management plans. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Robert. Any other business before the board, staff? If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Great. We had Robert Barron with you.
Kathleen, I think I heard everyone in favor.
Yes.
Thanks, everybody, and stay safe.
Thank you. You too.